Together, did collaboration with the other schools in our district. And so then I reached out to our teachers on Friday to let them know kind of the outlines of that plan and invited our school leaders or team leaders to come on today, earlier today, we met to finalize the plan. And it's very similar to what you're going to be hearing from the other schools in our district. One of the things we've been able to do in Steen Hatchie, because we have Boys and Girls Club on our campus, is we were able to go ahead and immediately start serving meals to students between 12 and 1:00, beginning last week from Monday to Friday. And so I've been able to be available at that time in case parents had questions about kind of where we're heading. And so I've answered their questions to the best of my ability at this time, given the information that we have. So after reaching out to our teachers, then we sent out a Blackboard call to all of our parents to let them know kind of the rough outlines of what would be coming this week. So they wouldn't, you know, they would know something is going on. Communication, I think, is the key during times like this. And so we've been trying to communicate as well as we can with our parents. So what we're going to do on Thursday is we're going to have packets that go home to our students. And so between 12 and 1:00, if there's students who do not typically ride the bus, they'll come pick them up during the meal distribution time at our school. And then if they do ride the bus, then at 2:30, which is our normal dismissal time, I'm planning on riding the bus with our bus driver and distributing the packets to those students along that route. We only have the single bus, so it's a little bit easier, you know, in Steen Hatchie than visiting the other schools. So when I met with teachers today, we took what the district had come up with through collaboration, which was, it was iReady package for grades K to 5. And so we took that information and then I had teachers look at it and think of other resources that they felt the students might need. And so we're in the process of adding those resources to the packet, some sites that they can go to to get additional help, things like that. And so once that packet is put together on Wednesday, then that will be distributed out to our parents on Thursday. One of the things that we've done as well is I reached out to all of my parents to find out who has Wi-Fi and who does not. Because, you know, part of this home instruction is going to be, they'll be at a big advantage if they can access online materials. So we have found through that, that in K to 5, we only have eight families without Wi-Fi. So we think that that's a positive, you know, in our school. And so our community projects board contacted me today and expressed interest in providing Wi-Fi for all of our students that do not have it already. So we're in the process of working that either through, one of the ideas, they came up with HughesNet, there's some contract things that are involved in that. I don't know, that's going to be our best way forward. So we're looking at maybe doing like jet packs or hot spots, something like that. Again, it'll be funded through our community projects board. So the other part of that, though, is they can have Wi-Fi, but if you don't have the device to connect to it, it does a little good. So teachers are going to be reaching out to all students tomorrow, and they're going to be finding out who is able to access ClassLink, which is the platform that we use to get hold of all of our online materials. And so we're in the process of figuring out who might need device support as well as that Wi-Fi support. And so we're exploring different avenues on how we can provide that support as well. So I just wanted to share a few of the things that I talked to my teachers about today. Beginning next week, we're going to have office hours for teachers. They're going to be contacted if they've decided they would rather be contacted at home instead of coming into the school. But they're going to set a minimum of three hours of office time. And then if they're contacted, special cases, they might need to be in communication outside of that time, if a parent works late or something along those lines. And so they're willing to do, you know, what they have to, to communicate with parents. If they're contacted by a parent outside of the time and they're unable to respond at that moment due to something else that's going on, then they're going to respond within 24 hours to that parent's request. They're going to share contact information with the parents when we speak to them tomorrow. They're going to give information on how to access ClassLink, like the six two numbers, and also the passwords. Once we send our packets out, we'll also send quick cards out with it so they can flash the card in front of the camera, which will connect them to ClassLink immediately. And so I really want to find out, though, what students can get into iReady. And I'll be able to see it as a monitor on my end when they're able to get in there, how long they're able to work in there. So that's one of the first big hurdles we're up against is to see if you can actually get into that platform and work in there. Because they'll put them on their specific learning path, so they can use this time to continue to grow. And again, we talked about what package we're going to go home. I want parents to be contacted at a minimum of once a week. They can go more frequently than that. We have a login sheet that they'll use to document all contact that they make with parents. So a minimum of once a week, if not more frequent than that. We're also part of the, we can feed them once a...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're having sound issues. We're going to try to see if we turn off the speaker system and invite that speaks up. If that will work better, we might still bring the switches, so if you want to... But we have other members, if you can also use your mic, turn the sound system off and see if that works any better. We apologize with the learning thing.
And I'll, I'm going to have to hit this. One of the things, we can provide the one meal per day for Boys and Girls Club, but that's still not as much food as our students are used to getting through our school lunch We also have close connections with our local food pantry. We've reached out to them. They've reached out to Second Harvest, which is the main supplier of food in our community. And what they're telling us is they would like for the food to go home through the backpack program. So another thing teachers are going to be asking parents, as they call it tomorrow, is what students will need that support? So we're going to look to add some to the food backpack program. As far as we know, unless it's changed since our ride, we're looking at April 15th as our return campus. And so at that time, the packets for two weeks' worth of work will be turned in, that will be extended, and we'd make alternative plans. So some other things, we have our grades are going to be completed by this Friday, and then we'll make sure that the report cards go home in an expedition manner. So our school office will be open beginning next week. And this is the second month of our extended reading rate. So beginning next Monday, we will have somebody on the end of... We'll have our student box, however, and we'll figure out ways to pay for that. We'll just make sure that our parents... Are there any questions?
You said we're not being on the bus, going and distributing packets? That's just you and the bus driver?
Right. So still run the route like normal, and then I'd like to be there to see if the child is in the classroom and just reach her if there's anything that's going to happen.
You mentioned now that... Any other admin group in there?
We're going to have it split where at least one person is there at all times. We try to keep the number down, you know, right? But we'll try to have at least one, one person will be there at all times.
Thank you, George, for having at least some contact.
And our teachers are all making themselves available to parents, so they'll be in contact as well.
But they'll be at home?
Correct. So they were given the option if they wanted to work at the school or at home, and they also liked to work at home.
Is there anything you need us to do as far as communications or anything? The superintendent?
Well, I'm sure y'all are doing all that you can. I mean, ideally, I'd like to have all these kids back in school again, but we just have to make the most of what we have, the resources we have available.
And is the packet school return when students return?
As of right now, if we follow the schedule that Governor Davis last time, where we return on April 15th, the packets are good for two weeks, so the packets will be returned when the students return to school. If we see in the meantime that the date's going to be extended, then what we'll do is we'll ride the bus route and hand out the next round of packets. I'll collect the packets at that time. And students who are in town who come and pick up their packets, they'll hand the packet in at that time.
And would the kids, the families that have internet access, you say their expectation would be for them to work on iReady?
Well, all of them are expected to do the packets, and then any who can also do iReady online on their own learning path are encouraged to do that as well. And the ones that don't have that access, we're working right now to get them that access.
Okay, so everybody is doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For those that have internet access, you're continuing to encourage them to work on iReady?
Right. They've opened it up where it can be worked on from home now.
Okay. And iReady kind of pays the kids on their own individual level?
Exactly.
Pretty much, they're going to pick up what they left off when they left school on 13th?
That's right.
Okay. And with the iReady expectation, are you asking your kids to be on there a certain amount of time?
We are, and I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, it's 30, 30 minutes on math and 30 minutes on reading each day is what we're asking.
Okay.
And that was a decision made by the teachers on that today. That's what we'd like to do. Do you have any questions? No, thank you, man.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. You're right. You tell... I'm just live here. Yes, sir. They're having problems with the sound. Any ideas, Jack?
No, sir. It's probably going to be one afterwards. We figure out how to best do it, and we'll improve upon on any future going forward with this.
That's Facebook Live.
Sir? Yeah, this right here is YouTube. This is Facebook right there. And we're trying our best to get everything to work.
Can you back up a couple feet? And then I'll try to focus on that.
Sure. Thank you. I'm here for Kelly as well. She is a little hesitant about going out, you know, in fact. So we're doing, we're using the same plan. If you look in the folder, the first is the cover letter that we're putting on into the packets. And so we've asked our teachers to come up on Thursday and help, you know, with getting these packets together, and they're going to contact our parents this week. And then the next two pages, there, that's the timeline for this week. If teachers can't come in, they are going to let us know, and then we have other people that have volunteered to come in and get their packets together for them. So do you want me to just read through this, or do you guys?
You can get it to John as well.
So on Tuesday, teachers are going to contact all their parents, or as many as possible. They'll find out if they have iReady packets, if they're ever able to print them out offline. If they normally are picked up at school, the packets will be available at the elementary school, in the primary school, at 2:25 normal pickup time on Thursday. And then if students are a bus rider and they need a packet, a paper packet, the plan is Thursday, March 26th, we'll be disseminating them. Ms. Bowden has come in, and she's running the package, and they are emailing her how many each homeroom needs. She's going to deliver them to the homerooms. They're going to come in Wednesday, report to their classroom, and we've told them if they're not comfortable coming to the school, they're going to email or call me, and, you know, we'll take care of it for them, because we don't want to make that a mandatory thing. But so many of them have reached out to us, and they want to do something. So we had lots of people up there working today, you know, in their separate rooms. They're going, we're going to label the tables in the lunchroom with bus numbers, and the envelope, if you look at this cover sheet, it tells the teacher's going to put what bus number the kids ride. And so they're going to then lay whatever bus the packet needs to go on, they're going to put their packet on that table. And we have people coming in to label the tables tomorrow. And then, so next, or by Thursday, March 26th, they're going to add office hours, like an office hour schedule. We've given them the option to do, to have that just from home or to come to the school, but they just can't be in groups of more than three. And the office hours begin Monday, March 30th, a minimum of three hours per day, five days a week. And then we have a log that they're going to fill out virtually online that we can look at to document their hours.
If a parent has questions about this package, they have a number, they can call the teacher, the specific teacher, or...
The teachers are going to, on this, on the cover letter, the teachers are going to write their office hours. And what we've told the parents, or what we, you know, put in this letter, is that basically the, if they contact them outside, whether it's dojo, because some people don't feel comfortable in their cell phone number hours, they're susceptible. If it's dojo or whatever, they have 24 hours, if it's within, you know, not within those three hours, those office hours, three hours. We're going to have somebody at the school answering phones from 9:00 to 2:00. So if people choose to do their office hours at school, we'll have somebody to transfer the calls to them.
How many packets are you talking about?
Debbie Bowden came in this afternoon, I think she had about 400 ready, so.
And the packets are rather thick, so I mean...
Yes, and yeah.
Was it tied in all of those?
No. So it's one per grade level.
I just know.
So if y'all just want to glance through them. And it's, I think I have K through 5 there. And we also, Read With Me brought a U-Haul full of books today, the Read With Me grant that we have. They brought a U-Haul full of books today. So Miss Crabb and Miss White were separating them by grade levels. So we're going to be giving those out on Thursday during the lunchtime. So parents want to come in. And we've also, there's a list of, if you look at the additional online resource suggestions for people that do have computer and internet access, there's some additional things that they can do. And we've opened up Accelerated Reader so they can take a test from home, and the books that were brought today are Accelerated Read books.
So when they come and pick up their child's lunch, they can get their child's packet?
Yes, on Thursday. They can do that. Or if they're not coming to get a lunch, then they would come at 2:25.
So what's the expectation is going to be on a packet? Is enough for them to cover for two weeks?
Two weeks, yes, ma'am.
And like far as when they return a packet? They're going to return a packet on the 15th, or else you get different guidance from them?
Well, yeah, we're going to have to have a drop-off area, and we haven't really figured out the logistics of that yet, just because it's going to be such a huge number. But there will be a drop-off, so we can leave them in that box for, you know, for allow them to make sure there's no germs.
So that's what I'm saying, like, will these packets be graded? Will the students be getting a grade for this, or this is just work to keep them while they're out?
We kind of discussed that. I guess it really depends on how many we get back, but I mean, the expectation would be for them to do it and them to be checked.
The grades that have to go out on the 27th for this nine weeks, I'm sort of feeling some people talk about that. Is that something that is pretty much in the works now? I mean, report cards?
What we, what we talked about in our meeting was that parents can pull those up on their phone through their Focus account. So until, you know, something changes the limit, the exposure, I don't really think that's a good, you know, a safe thing to try to deliver report cards or have in here.
I think the question is, the work's completed?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The work, everything's done. Great work to do, yeah.
So you've got that third nine weeks, that grade is pretty much there?
Oh, yes.
It ended March 13th. It ended March 13th.
Yeah. It's the third nine weeks, I started giving, yeah. And our grades will be the Friday before, primary and elementary grades will be Friday before.
But when they come pick up their packets, they're not going to have the report card in here?
Anything you need from us? No, I think we're good. We're busy today, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Tell them why you did Kelly something.
Yeah, I told them she just, yeah, and there was no...
I got a little quick question.
Yep.
And that is, this is starting to roll with things, it's different, and have you had very much response back from the teachers as far as, you know, how they seem to be stressed out over this, or...
I mean, they, everybody has been, you know, as positive as they can be, and they just want to know how they can help. I mean, they're, and they want to be back at school, but, but nobody's given any pushback at all. And they're just appreciative that we, you know, that we got it all together for them, and we're trying to make it as easy as possible.
So we need a discussion about maybe doing a virtual talk. Will it involve to the parents once a week?
Do you think by each teacher or from?
From the school?
I will do something each week from the school, either dojo, Facebook. So, and we're working on some other stuff with Ms. Pearson, some technology things. And then we have some teachers, I think my fifth grade science lead, she's going to talk about doing a virtual lesson week, and then we'll post it on social media.
As we go through this, right now, you know, the target is to come back to school on 15th, but if that changes, is this the format that we're moving into, is that the same format that we repeat throughout the rest of the school?
I would assume so. And I would assume that our iReady, the curriculum would still continue to send us basically, because I mean, it'll be the whole state. So, and they put that together, and I had the teachers look over them, and they said there were skills that they've already covered, so the kids should be able to do them at home, you know, with minimal help.
So is, do fair primary, Taylor, fair primary and elementary, do you guys have the same expectation as Steen Hatchie, where the kids are going to be doing packets and iReady?
Well, the, I mean, the additional resources, we can't mandate that. It's just something that, I mean, because everybody doesn't have internet access. So if you have it, yes, this is the same expectation.
Okay. Because I think some was thinking that it would be a packet if you didn't have internet, but then it would be online if you did have internet. But you're saying they're going to need to do both?
Well, if you look at, I can send you all the link where we got these packets from, and the parent, we're going to post it as well to the parents, and they can put it on, and they can print it. I mean, that's basically what they're doing. So this, I mean, it's a paper packet, but then in addition, because this isn't online, you see what I'm saying? Their path online is the additional things that they can do.
The, iReady is the core, and then anything online is just a supplement.
Right. Like their, like when I put on here 40 minutes in math and reading using iReady, that's their learning path. So that's what they would be doing at school. So everybody's not going to do that, but if you have access, we really want you to. And then like AR, we're asking them to get at least five points per week if they have access to a computer.
Now, how are y'all going to be monitoring iReady?
The teachers will monitor it. They can monitor it from their computer, and then they can talk to their parents, maybe their office hours. And so it gives a report, it tells if the kids failed lessons, it tells if they rushed through the lessons. So it, I mean, it automatically adjusts.
Thank you.
I thought you were done. That's probably...
All right, let me walk real quick, just so you can see what the letter is that we're sending home to the parents in the packets. So this letter that you see right here, I haven't turned on Letterhead or anything, but this is going to go in their packet that they're going to receive. So for instance, this is a sixth grade packet, and we're going to probably do, I'm supposed to be over here?
Yes, thank you, Heidi.
We're probably going to do the same thing as what we did, what the package you see here, is place it in a folder with reading on one side and math on the other, with that letter inside of here, trying to answer as many questions as we can in that letter. Also, my parents, I mean, my teachers, we've kind of typed up a script because we wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page at my school. So right now, like I said, we're just going to focus on reading and math until we get further word, are we going to continue after April 15th, or are we going to, you know, have to stay home? So some of the things on the script, and I can show you that, that my teachers are going to start asking tomorrow, is, you know, do they have internet access? Would they be willing to, or would they be available to some of these programs that we can offer them? Like Sabrina was talking about with iReady, Path, and different programs, StudyIsle and Apex. So we just want to know what we're dealing with. If we have, you know, 75 to 80% of our students that can access this stuff on a laptop, tablet, or so forth. So here's just a little script, real quick. Just that my teachers are going to be going through, making sure that we have all the necessary information that we need, and we can get these packets on the buses Thursday. And then we'll also have Monday and Tuesday, the packets will be located at the front of my school for the ones that don't ride buses.
Do the children, is their work going to turn in front of them?
Oh, sure. We're going to have, it's also in the parent letter that we'll have a drop-off box located at the front of our school. So I'll probably have that out there by Monday or Tuesday, even though we're just going to be passing out packets. So yes, the drop-off box will be located in the front of our school.
So we, one more time, the packets will be ready for the buses?
The packets are going to be ready for the buses Wednesday afternoon. We get them to the bus garage Wednesday afternoon. We'll have them separated by bus, a six, a seven, whatever the bus number is. And then the packets that are going to be picked up are going to be sitting in front of the school.
Now, why do parents don't feel comfortable dropping off a packet in a drop-off?
What do you mean, they don't feel comfortable?
Well, they don't want to leave it in the drop-offs. Well, they want to make sure that it gets turned in, and they want to leave it with someone.
I don't think that's an option.
That's not an option. So no one's...
I mean, I don't want to interact.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, like, is someone going to be at the school?
Sure. Yes, I have someone answering the phone 24/7, or during my seven, eight hours of school during the week. But also, just like the sign says at the door, you know, call this number if you want information. But they're going to put it in the drop-offs. That's the only place they can, because let's just say they have something and they're, it's on their packet, I'm not going to pick it up. I mean, I'm not going to pick it up for a couple of days. I'm going to make sure it's safe.
To when I do decide to get to it.
So whatever the amount is, so no, it's got to go in the drop-off, not an option. Or don't bring it. I mean...
It's a question?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, I just get alarmed because we've still got to follow the safety. We're doing everything we can to give them something so they can continue their education and keep them on some kind of track, just doing one lesson a day in math and one lesson a day in reading. And, you know, that's just, and then we've all said this, it's just our good faith effort to make sure they're getting something. But there's also other things that they can be doing too. Until we know for sure that we're going beyond April 15th, that's what I think, after we get this first week, this week, and all this stuff passed out, and then I'm going to be having more meetings, I'm out with several team leaders today, then I'm going to be having more meetings next week to start looking at other options for our students, you know.
You mentioned that the packets will be ready for the bus on Wednesday afternoon. Will they go out Wednesday or will they go out Thursday?
Thursdays.
They'll go out, but they'll be ready to put on the bus Wednesday?
Yeah, I need to get it to them Wednesday, because I don't even know what time the buses are leaving Thursday. So that was just my deadline for myself and my teachers to have our packets and stuff ready.
That's probably a question to the superintendent, on these buses that you're going to be sending out packets. I guess bus driver and another person?
Yes, sir. We're either between the administrators and some different employees, we can all, the plan is to have somebody else on the bus with, to pass it out.
Some of our aides are volunteered, or, you know, said that they would more than, they would be glad to get on the buses and help.
I guess this guy, if you're on the bus and you go from house to house, ask these packets?
I don't think they're going house to house. I think they're going to go to the...
Bus stop.
The bus stop.
Okay, we're going to the bus stop.
They're going to have names on their packets. So it'll say, sixth grade, Johnny Brown, bus six, or bus seven.
Okay. But when you go to the bus stop, who's going to be there?
The student or the parent?
We receive the packets. We receive the packets.
Y'all have, y'all will be talking to the parents ahead of time to make sure that there's somebody there, I guess is the question.
Is that what you're asking? Yes, we're going to post it on the district website, what time the buses will be at those bus stops.
Okay, so it needs to be, there needs to be someone from the child representative there, or the child themselves to pick it up.
And their name will be on that packet.
Are we gonna put this in the paper again, uh, something that affects, so that the public knows, should be watching out for this?
Yeah, we can get that, we'll get some in the paper in the morning, I was just thinking that the paper goes out, but, oh, we get some in the morning, they can.
Something so that people have a, but, the teacher?
But you said that you'll be talking to, the teachers, we're talking to each one of the parents?
Every one of my teachers will be calling their home-based students with, and, and, like I said, this is the, the, the script. And in here, it should say, I'll make for sure, that they're letting them know that on Thursday, packets will be being delivered by the buses to their bus stop, um, so that those bus riders know that. Then any other student, that's normally a drop-off or a pickup, that their packets will be located at the front of the school. Um, that should have been in here, yes.
But I, and again, I guess, you know, because, I, 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 and I...
Right there, okay, our district will be using the buses to distribute both reading and math, students' stay-at-home packets this Thursday, March twenty-sixth. So we're telling parents when we call them, that they're gonna...
Now, some parents are still working, so they're gonna say that they're not available to pick up these packets on Thursday.
The kid can come.
Will they be able, the kid gonna come?
What I'm gonna have the bus drivers do, whatever, whoever is not there to pick up one, I'm gonna have them return them back to the school to me, and then on Monday and Tuesday, all day long, I'll have them sitting sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, in stacks at the front of my school. So I'm gonna have the bus drivers, or the bus garage, return my packets back to me, the ones that were not received.
So that's what I was saying, the ones that can't pick up on Thursday, they won't have the option on Friday, they just will have the option on Monday?
I don't know if I'll have them back by Friday, but I've al, I haven't...
I'm talking about the ones that will come and pick them up?
No, because I've already set the guidelines, and it's hard for me, like, I have to get this script done for my teachers to start calling, so I gave it...
I'm not talking about the ones going home on the bus, I'm talking about the people that would normally be a drop-off pickup, you said that their packet would be available at two something on a Thursday.
Monday and Tuesday, right. Monday and Tuesday from eight to three, they can come out of school anytime from eight to three.
Right.
And it'll be sitting out front.
That's what I'm asking.
So why am I waiting till Monday or Tuesday? Just trying to give us some time, because just today, I have done nothing but meet from seven-thirty in the morning till about three-thirty this afternoon, just solid. Just trying to meet with my team leaders, then my team leaders are going to try to meet, you know, with just those four members and decide, you know, let's call our parents, um, and then Wednesday, they're going to try to label the packets, number the packets, get them to me. So I'm trying to spread it out so that we're not all just, I mean, my office staff has been non-stop running copies today, and I still have twelve hundred copies, because we're having to make six hundred of these, and, I mean, two hundred of these and two hundred of these per grade, and they're big.
I understand, but I was just saying, I know some parents are still having to work, and if they're not able to pick up during the pickup time, I was just wondering what would be the pickup option, because I thought that we was making it packets for those without internet, but those with internet, I thought they would just put stuff online.
Well, I think that's, that may be an option, that parent may tell that teacher, when she calls tomorrow, Wednesday, is there any way you can email me? But I, when I told my team leaders today, they honestly felt like, like personally, I don't have a printer at home. So I just think, of all people, of anybody, I should have a printer at home, not a lot of people have the, uh, capabilities of printing, and then they're gonna ask you, well, who's gonna pay for my coffee paper? Well, I see if they don't have, I think they'll make the choice, if it's at lunch or whatever, the swing by the school, their lunch, their break, or they'll send someone to pick it up for them. I think most of those drop-off and pickup students will make accommodations to get there, you know.
So Thursday on the bus or Monday, Tuesday to pick up?
Right.
I've gone out before, I know the work life, they're helping, cut channel down.
Well, your hours are not, your hours on...
Well, I'm just, I just put a time on there, eight to three. I mean, and that's more than most that I've seen, I mean, some people are just doing two or three hours. I mean, I'm trying to give them a good, broad time to pick up and drop off. Drop off anytime in the drop-offs, but the pickup is just gonna stick to those times.
And I'm sure a lot of those parents will be, we intend, like you said, the teachers.
Yeah, and they'll tell the teachers when they call.
Can other parents pick up for other people?
I am not going to stand outside and check off, what I'm gonna do is since those packets will be labeled, I'll know that someone picked up from that student. There're gonna be different tables, sixth grade table, seventh grade table, eighth grade table, and I see maybe fifty to sixty on each table, according to what I see dropped off in the morning.
And you need from us?
No, ma'am. I mean, we've pulled this together, I mean, we've met, but we've pulled a lot, a lot of this that you see in us talking about has been pulled together today. So we still have a lot of questions ourselves, but I have a lot of questions for my teachers, saying, what about this, what about that? Well, let's do this first, and then we can deal with what's coming after April fifteenth.
Well, it's a learning curve, it's, it's something that you've never probably had to do before, and so, you know, I, I know that it's nothing perfect, and I just, you know, simply will say this, and I'll say it again, you know, that all we can do is do the very best we can, and everybody be considerate and work together, um, you know, that's what the, our nation, our leaders of the nation is asking us to do here locally, and, uh, so, and, and, and so we just gonna have to work together and, and kind of make the very best out of it, so.
But we're willing to do whatever, this is just the basic of what we want to do. And then if there are parents that say, I can't get there, then I'm sure we can figure it out, you know, so.
All right, do you have anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you, Heather Ann.
Yes.
What happened to the option of a survey in the camp?
Ma'am?
What happened to the option of a survey in the camp?
They're still gonna, they call them, they're still gonna find out what they have, what they have internet or not have internet or possibly.
There's, there's no mics, so you need to speak up and it's recorded, please.
Okay, I'm here. Hey, y'all. Um, so we spent today, my advent team, um, called parents and or students, um, to poll and see who has internet and a device, and whether or not, and if they don't have internet or a device, to find out if we have, to be sure that we have their correct address on file. And so we've got most of the parents contacted, um, at this point. We have a few that we're gonna have to do callbacks on tomorrow to, to verify, you know, what they have available and what we need to prepare for them. So based on that, um, the, the instruction is either gonna be delivered through Google Classroom, and that's something we've been doing across, in many of our classrooms already. So my instructions to my teachers, when I emailed them today, was if you've been using Google Classroom, continue in that method, just realize that everybody's not gonna have that same access. So whatever you've given to them, I need a print copy. So all of those students whose parents or they verified that they need that paper copy, we're gonna make those copies Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week. Um, so, um, the packets that we're doing is gonna cover one week at a time, um, because we, since we are different, we're, we're awarding credits, and so it's gonna be whole harmless, but at the same time, they do need to do some sort of, of work that shows that they've been, you know, given the educational opportunity that they're supposed to have had. Um, so we're going to plan to have a table set up out front, we're gonna have all of the, the, the work collected in file folders by grade and subject, so ninth grade English, tenth grade English, ninth grade honors, tenth grade honors, and so on and so forth. And when they come by, we'll just hand them the packets that they need.
And they will weekly in there?
Ma'am, they're gonna come Monday.
Monday.
Monday. Um, so they're gonna come Monday and pick up a packet, we'll have a drop box outside for them to return them to. They'll be due back the following Monday, and then that's when they'll pick up their next round of work. Um, the kids that are on the border of whether or not they're passing their class for the year and earning their credit, that's another phone call that guidance is gonna make, and say, you know, seniors, seniors taking, you know, precedence, because of course we've gotta make sure that they're getting everything they're supposed to go, supposed to have to graduate, but if, if a student is sitting at a fifty-eight, we're gonna make contact with those parents and make sure that they know it's, it's critical for their kid in order to earn that credit, so that, you know, they're not in a credit recovery situation when we resume normal operations. Um, so that's gonna be, so we're distributing and collecting, if they're depending on, and then, um, the teachers are gonna work a minimum three hours a day. They're gonna plan their next week of assignments, answer emails, grade any assignments that they have, return phone calls. Um, we spent some time this morning looking at setting up Google phone numbers, it's free, um, especially since we're already using Google Classroom and they've got that platform set up, it's just an extra little thing that they can use. Um, a lot of my teachers have expressed concern about using their personal cell phone number, and this will just be a way for them to, to, parents can still contact, it's still a local number, but it's not gonna be something that, um, that they'll have long-term, you know, to, to ask random things that, that don't pertain to class. Um, so that's, that's the high school's plan. I have asked them to do your review concepts, I asked them not to do anything brand new, um, just because, you know, I, especially with math, um, you know, math at the elementary age is hard enough, when you get into algebra and geometry and things like that, that I don't do anymore, um, I can't imagine having a tutor run through it, so I would not want anybody to send that home. So they've, they've been encouraged to do review items, um, my AP courses, those AP exams are still on per college board, they're gonna take those at home, is the, the latest thing that, that they've sent to us, which I think is interesting, and it's all gonna be done online, and, and I guess they have a plan. Um, and so my AP teachers are taking a little bit different route, since their testing is still gonna go on as, as normal, they're gonna have to present new information, and so that's, um, AP plane and then AP human geography. And we clarified that, that, that their expectation's different, because their testing hasn't been delayed, that's not a state decision or anything, that's, that's a whole separate entity. So everyone else should be doing basically a spiral review to wrap up the year, uh, the same thing you would be doing in your classroom, you know, to prepare them for testing, or just to kind of finish out the year if you don't have a test, so.
Can you talk about graduation requirements and testing, I don't know, that's one way, student requirements, they still have to pass the classes?
They just, they need to have passed their eighteen core credits. Um, most of our seniors are in a good place there, I have a handful that, that we're gonna be required, that we're, we're gonna be very, um, I can't think of the word, they needed this nine weeks to pass that English, and so those are the ones that will be in contact with first. But yes, all of their state testing requirements, so they needed a tenth grade DLA or an algebra score, that all got waived by the state. Um, and so we actually were gonna wait, we're supposed to have SAT scores back from March fourth on this Friday, and, um, in talking with some of the teachers about those students that were still holdouts, they felt like it would be a really good, you know, adderboy for them if we waited and called them and we get those scores back and say, you know, they waived it, but you got the scores, so congratulations, you know, you're gonna graduate because the state said so, but, but for those that have worked so hard to get those scores, we thought it would be a nice, you know, just adderboy in the midst of all of this, where there's so much other uncertainty to, to give them a little bit of a kudos for their hard work.
Do y'all have a number of how many seniors are falling short of their required credits at this point?
Uh, that number's less than ten, I mean, everybody's on track credit-wise, it's just those few that have, have not, they've had a bump, you know, first semester on, on GPA or, or, um, grades in those couple core classes. Most everybody at this point, we've been tracking, and Ms. Janelle has been on top of making sure that they're ready, you know, ready to go out the door. So there aren't any surprises, um, there may just be a lot of follow-up with them in particular, in particular to let them know that, um, you know, how important it is that they complete these assignments for us and get them back. Um, I know that some of the students have, um, when they've been at TAS, they have sent pic, they've taken pictures of their assignments, and they've emailed them back to their teachers, and so that's also an option, um, you know, just to make sure that they get it, if it's something really critical like this, I'm gonna encourage them, whatever means they need to, you know, if they need to mail it back to us, we can take it that way. But, but those are the ones that, you know, we'll just be in a lot of contact with them.
How much of an impact do you think it's gonna have on the eleventh graders going into their senior year? Do you think they're gonna be hard hit?
I have, there's probably more eleventh graders that are gonna be harder hit than the seniors, honestly. Um, I know that we've got eighteen that are sitting in a reading class, um, because they still need a score. Uh, I'm sorry, eighteen in one and eighteen in another, so I've got about forty children who, who need that score still that are eleventh graders, and, and so we've taken away opportunities, but they took that SAT on March fourth. So there is, they did get that last school day SAT in, they took, some of them signed up and took it like the following week, before everything shipped in. So they, they got those two opportunities, um, that really should be the big hurdle for most of them, because again, we're tracking them, um, through MTSS, and we've had lots of conversations with parents about expectations and, and how we need to step up to make sure that we're not, you know, crossing into August with big shortages.
Sounds like there's a step on top of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Could be a, could be a big issue.
Yes, ma'am. Um, you know, and another issue that, that we're gonna have, and it is through no fault of anyone's, is, are the students, the tenth grade students who didn't take the ELA test, because that is, is, is still gonna be required for them to pass, and they waived for the seniors, but the underclassmen that didn't count for. So the plan, um, I spoke with someone the other day, and they said that they're gonna leave it up to the, to the districts to decide. My hope is that we can go ahead and give them that test in fall, in fall as a retake, and give them one more opportunity to pass if they wouldn't have taken it this time. Um, so that'll be the entire tenth grade group, as opposed to a little pocket of kids. And then I've got a whole cohort of algebra students, three classes, who won't take their EOC. Um, hopefully we can go back to some sort of normalcy and we can hit them in July, and we could have boot camp a couple weeks before that and, and refresh their memory, and the, the pass rate on that was low last year. The teacher that took that on this year has really, um, you know, embraced it and, and worked really hard, so it would be a shame for them to have lost that whole year of learning, that their, you know, that opportunity to shine, because they really have worked hard to get that. So those are my two, you know, even though my eleventh graders are the next priority behind the seniors, I've got other big issues looming for those younger cohort groups, so, just a big picture.
You have a lot of moving parts.
Lots of moving parts, lots of sticky notes on my calendar last week, 'cause I thought through things that, you know, um, when I couldn't stop thinking, I guess, so.
Please let us know when we can maybe help.
Yes, ma'am, all right, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. If y'all have a topic of this, if you do, if you don't, let me know. I feel like I'm breathing a kernel now.
We can hear you, kids.
All right, good. Mind be brief, let me know when I'm cute to start, though. All right, I'm sorry, all right, good afternoon. Um, I know that y'all probably here for... I know that y'all probably here for the same reason that all the other folks came, so you hear mine playing, right? So as you know, in a few months that we've been impacted by this virus and it's spreading everywhere. And so we have to change and adjust some things for our students. I've been at TAS for about maybe nine weeks now. So I'm learning what I need to do. What I'm telling you is, is things are improving. So let me get right to what we need to be, what we're here for. All right, so as you know, we're trying to communicate to our teachers and staff and everybody that's belonged to TAS, what our expectations are. So, and I, I just want you to understand, I'm trying to be informative when I sent out that message, the cover letter and, and also our action plan to all the parents and the teachers and the students, what we're gonna be doing. We wanna be proactive. I know there's some questions that need to be answered. So hopefully that actually answer all the questions and also excuse some of the things and uncertainties that they have. So right now, I just want you to understand that the first thing we wanted to do, and I contacted my staff via phone, 'cause I didn't want them to come to the building. And I, I told them what we are expectations are at the teacher. I told them you have to be available for the student between eight o'clock and three-thirty. Why is that important? Well, as you know, TAS is already on a computer, well, well, I'm sorry, a computer-based curriculum, which is called Apex. So it's kind of easy for us, an easy fix. All we have to do is say, hey, just be available for the students, let them do the resets. And the first thing I told them this morning individually, I said, you need to find out how many students at their home have a computer and have access to the internet. If they do not have that, you can contact the admin office, which will be ran by four of our non-instructors. So that information I'll give you later regarding their schedule. So we're working that out. Hopefully we'll have a balanced schedule for the entire time. So someone will be manning that particular office at all times. So, so now, and I, in the letter, it tells, talks directly to the parent, one section of it, and the guardians regarding what our expectations are of them. Let, let them know that on March thirtieth until April fifteenth, we're gonna ship deals into something new, be remote, they have a computer at home, they can operate at home and continue their work. But we also make sure that the parent know that they're responsible for monitoring their, their child's work and their work ethic. And so, and at the same time, the, the teacher will be communicating with the parents via Remind. And I'm not sure you heard about Remind, but Remind was set up by Ms. Connie Pearson and I about two weeks prior to this, anticipating that something like this was gonna happen, but it was gonna, we were naming that something different. But you know how God works, so I said, and all of a sudden this happened, so we're already fixed. So Remind is for communicating with the teacher and the student while online. And they can, as I was gonna say, she can text messages and they can text back. And it'll come on their email or their phone. You know, every student have a phone, some of them don't. But we got it running for them. So if you're, if you've been familiar with Apex, it is a computer-based program. Of course, you can, you can copy each lesson. So if a student do not have a computer or internet service, then those, then those, the teacher will identify who that is and they will work diligently without knowledge for those people to print up all the things that they need. Now, I think probably, you probably heard that the other principals have said they have a two-week schedule on Thursdays submitting that packet, but we don't need many packets. We're a small number. So we're gonna be producing packets Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The reason why I did that, because a kid fits a packet, it'll probably in one or two days. That gives the teacher enough chance to adjust, to put the information out being, also with the help of the non-instructional folks that's taking care of their responsibility during their time while they're in administrative office. So while they're being available, I'm talking about the teachers, if they, if they're gonna be available, we make sure that the, the timeframe is within the hour that they will be working if it was normal. All right, so the physical building that we're gonna be housed in, of course, it'd be off limits for all students and the parents. They know this and send the letter. If you can't come there, the door's gonna be locked. But you can talk to it, you can call. And the number's provided on the letter. And it also will give you the timeframe, you can call. Of course, y'all know about the tests, if it's suspended or canceled. Do you remember anything about that? So the focus on, regarding, the last part that I talked to the parents about is encouraging them to have their, to have their child, encouraging them to do the work. And the thing that I didn't put in here is this, is we can see if they're on the system working through Apex. And for them to check in with their teacher each day, it's kind of like a roll call that they are working. If they're not working, the teacher's responsibility to contact the parent and contact the student and say, you're not working, what's wrong? If there need to be some changes in what you're doing at home, your computer crashed, you need to let us know. You know, things happen. The other section that it's talking about, directed to the student. Student expectation is to continue their first and second semester coursework, which is designed in them on Apex. You know, they are, they have free reign to continue to work from day and night until prob, probably until midnight, work on this, these things if they're behind. Some of them, some of these kids are behind, way behind. But we're, we're gonna, they look care of and trying to do this since I've been there, is a reward for them to finish what they need to do. And of course, we got some things we'll do at the beginning of next year if God's willing. All right, so, and the explanation, I'm not gonna go to, I'm not gonna introduce your intelligence on this in regard to them going on our website, clicking on class link and then getting to Apex. If they ever probably get to Apex, you can call their teacher and say, hey, I can't get in. If the teacher is working with someone else, they call the main office and say, I can't get in, the ID wrong, the password's wrong, please, help me. So they can call the TAS main office. And of course, I talked to you about Remind, and it was, some explanatory in my letter, tell them what, what it's for. Also, I'll be available as well through email as well. So in the last portion, I directed toward the teachers and the staff. So the teacher's gonna be responsible, contacted the student initially, should happen tomorrow, asking each student, do they have access to a computer and do they have internet service? That's important, based on what I just said. And if they, also if they did not give me their email address and their phone numbers, then they need to contact the administrative office or they give it to me so I can put them on the list in Remind. Last thing, oh, second to last thing, is that the non-instructional folks, we're gonna work a flexible schedule for them. So, so that's worked out between myself and Ms. O'Quinn. We'll get that information out, but in the, the admin office will be covered, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be listening to and, and complying with the rules regarding them being in contact with each other. And so we wanna make sure that we stay safe and that they stay safe. So are there any questions about my action plan?
Question, how many, how many students do we have now?
Right now, we have a total.
That's a good question.
Yes. On, on record, the kids who are coming is about forty-two.
Okay. Are there any of those that need to go back to their parent schools, I mean, you know, class lines during this time, or we're just maintaining what they have?
We can maintain what they have because the kids, some of them are already finished. I was told today by some of the teachers, some of them are already finished. And they're working on extra stuff and they're asking me if they continue. So I'm not gonna say yes or no to that, but if they finish in time, they can get the credit. Any other questions?
Anything, anything you need from us?
I think y'all, y'all stay safe, so we'll come back and see you in about, what, three weeks from now. I'll bless y'all. Thank you.
Send Joey again.
Do it. Okay.
Take the packet and pass it down.
Ms. Tillman, the mic? The sound system's not working, so if you can speak loud.
I don't have any problems here. I think we can give it. Extra copy, anybody need it? Welcome this opportunity to tell you what we're going to do at BBTIC. I do wanna start by just making sure everyone's on the same page, realizing that we're a little bit different than everybody else. Not only do we need to meet your expectations, but we also have floor Department of Education, Career and Technical Division's expectations. COE, our accrediting agency, which is different than any other school in the county. We have Pell opportunities that we have to meet or responsibilities that we have to meet. And the federal government is also sending us daily correspondence that we must meet their requirements as well. So we have tried very hard in our plan to meet all of those entities' expectations. We did a quick internet check, computer check, if you will, for our health science students. I am gonna have to check out five laptops. I have five students, all of them seniors at, at Taylor, who don't have access to a laptop. So we're gonna check those out to them from a classroom set that we have in the school. I'll also let you know that I checked out the, my students or my teachers' desk copies of desk computers to my QPM teachers because, as you see, they are a hundred percent going online and I'll be happy to share that with you. In our plan, the first piece of paper in front of you is manufacturing diesel and for the life of man cannot figure out how we're gonna teach that online, neither can anybody else in the state. What our plan is, is we will, Ms. Henry and I in the morning will do an audit of all of our students and any of our students that are seniors that need credits to graduate or adults that would have completed in this nine weeks. We will roll out small instruction, face-to-face instruction, nine students to one teacher ratio, starting April first. And so this will allow any student who was scheduled to complete this nine weeks to do so, adult-wise, and any high school student to earn any necessary credit. There are no high school seniors from Taylor County or from Lafayette County that need the CTE credit that they're in right now to graduate. All of them have met their graduation requirements that we have dual-enrolled because there's several credit opportunities for them. So they've already earned several credits. It's not like they need this last one that will be earned this nine weeks. Night welding, classes will resume on Monday. We have nine students in night welding and Mr. Tripp is prepared to open that program. In electrical and instrumentation, we have several students who are out on internships and they will continue those internships as long as the companies where they're interning are still open. Mr. Yvonne and I have spoken. We are looking for additional internships that may go ahead. We're gonna waive. Normally we have a sixty percent completion rate in program before we allow students to go out and intern. But in these circumstances, we'll waive that requirement. So some of those students who are gonna be going out to summer employment, we may employ them out earlier, if you will, to allow them to start earning those hours toward their graduation. All other students will be returning in August. There are no students close enough to graduate and they understand that they'll be coming back in August, hopefully, if we go back to school. In diesel mechanics, same scenario as welding, the students will be looked at and if they're in that close period, we'll bring them back. The instructor has, will begin a process, whether it be textbook assignments, package, or they do have some ASE, Automotive Society, I'm not sure what the E V, but for their, pardon me? Excellent, thank you. For, they do have some online work that they can do and we can meet some of those hours. We have to be very careful because we have to have permission from COE and we have to have permission from the federal government anytime we call something online. I'll get to that in just a minute. Adult education in our GED program, Donna Johnson is offering any interested GED or adult ed student coursework online using the Apex platform. Textbooks and packets are available to students who need hands-on learning, but that, that's a little difficult for them to do where they don't have internet at home. They can come by and pick up packets for GED. We will continue to test every other Wednesday in our lab. The GED people know to only schedule nine at a time, but no more than nine can be tested and the lab is large enough to test students in a safe, social distance apart. SLDOE has waived the TAE testing procedures, meaning that in adult ed, we have to test them every sixty hours. We do not have to meet that waiver at this point because there's no way we can bring them in and test them every sixty hours. Additionally, floor Department of Education has waived the grant number requirements for last year and for this year. So we will not be in a position where we have to pay back any adult ed grant money for not being able to meet our enrollment numbers because of the situation. Our Pearson U testing lab will be open for testing and we'll test, like I said, every other Wednesday for GED. We are in a position where we're trying to open up our PM program for next year and there is a T's testing requirement. So Ms. Davis has scheduled some T's tests starting next week, again, nine or less at a time. And so we've extended that and I'll talk about practical nursing in just a minute. The next letter is an emergency order from our accrediting agency allowing us to teach distant learning and online learning for our health science programs. We specifically asked for these programs because these teachers are ready to go. And so we're going to open up those programs and we can look through that to show you. Our medical coder builder has, all his assignments will be online. They will be doing some interactive lessons with his, with his students. You can see he's outlined it there exactly what's due and how it's due and how it would be turned in. And so I don't feel that there'll be any, we had already purchased some online software for them, let's be honest, that's what most coders do. And so there won't be a problem in there, they won't miss a beat. The next letter is the Department of Health letter, and if you look on page two, that side should be highlighted for you. That's permission from the Department of Health for us to waive our in-person clinical site requirement because obviously we can't get into a clinical site. And so we were very fortunate that we had CAPE money available. So our CAPE money and our lab fees have been combined. We spent nine thousand dollars today. We sending that to ask you to do that in a little bit, but we had the mood to order clinicals online. So the simulation clinicals will be available to our nursing instructors. It's what the State Board of Nursing recommended that we do. And so our nurses will move forward with online clinicals as, as given permission by the Board of Nursing. PCT is in the same boat. The only clinical that they have left is phlebotomy. And Ms. Rice is working with them. She'll be bringing in small groups of instruction for them to get their sticks in. Their sticks, they have to have, I believe it's twenty-nine live sticks prior to sitting for their phlebotomy exam. And you can see Ms. Rice a hundred percent has her program online and ready to go and her students have been assigned through April third. And then if we need to extend that, we can and she's prepared to do so. Practical nursing will go a hundred percent online in the morning with your permission. They have lined it out where these students will graduate in June, a week later than they were expected to great, to graduate. So really they're just missing this week's of instruction, you know, last week and they'll be ready to go. Again, we've purchased the online simulations for them, for their labs. And so they are one hundred percent ready to go and we have a plan for high-stakes testing where they will come in and they'll utilize the testing lab, but in the D building, nine students, and then nine students in the A building, so they can test eighteen at a time without any, any problem. So there'll be no high-stakes testing done online, that will all be done in person. Massage therapy, again, her learning plan, she's gonna use Facebook Live for her lectures. She too is covered under this Department of Health because she's a licensure program, so she's got permission to do her clinicals in simulation. What she plans to do is, since everyone's probably isolated or self-isolated, they'll be giving a lot of housemates massages at home and they'll film those and then turn them in for critiquing. So they'll be doing that. They also have mock EMLEX, which is their test that they must take for certification and that's an online software for them. And so they'll be utilizing for, for that classroom as well. We'll tell you that branding your blessing, in the morning, we have scheduled four hours out, an hour for each program because the students left for spring break and they didn't have any textbooks with them. So we'll be passing out textbooks in the morning, students can come by and they can pick up. And then the teachers will go through and sanitize, they're not gonna come in the building, they're gonna leave them at the front door with the desk in front of them and... and pass out textbooks and anything else that the students have left, and then we'll sanitize the classroom. And then the D building, for all intent and practical purposes, will be shut down unless they come in to take a test in the testing lab. Otherwise, there will be no students in the D building whatsoever. Questions about our programs?
Yes, tell them that Ms. Mathis had a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
Answer is yes. Careful, you're going to say yes to her.
Jeannie, you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, so I want to back thirty up just a little bit, back to the GED, and if you already covered this, I can hear some stuff, and some stuff I can't hear very clearly, but are we accepting new students for GED? Will they be distance learners, if so?
At this point, we're not going to accept any new students until August. That was not a directive from the department, but it, I mean, we're already stretching how we're going to reach these students, and quite honestly, the only way that I feel comfortable moving forward is because those students are used to the platform that we have. We wouldn't have any way of training them. I don't, I don't want to have a whole lot of face-to-face interaction with anybody, much less brand-new students. So at this point, our intentions, if allowed, would be to run a course in July, if time and grace of God permits, then that's when we would start new students. But at this point, I really don't think it'd be fair to the student or the instructor to bring anybody new.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jody, one more thing, can I get you to email me the handout?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
If you can scan and send them to her?
I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay. My staff clean is in the back. I have three non-instructional staff, and two custodians, or one and a half custodians, and then I have three staff members that we call administrative staff, but only because they're on a different schedule. That's my financial aid administrator, my fiscal manager, and my data technology person. We have scheduled out where they will work seven-hour days, two seven-hour days a week on a rotational basis. The rotation is there through June 3rd. I mean, you know, if we come back in two weeks, we can shred this and be happy to do so, but went ahead and cleaned it out until the end. I do have some employees who are immune deficient, and they will be working in their office. It will not be expected to run the front desk, not that we're going to let people in or anything, but I don't want to expose them, even if someone will come to the door, for that matter. And we do have the signs posted, we do have the bell system, and so they can call the front office, and if they want to come and drop off practical nursing packets, or they want to pick up packets for next year, we'll have a table outside, a duck set up for them, so that they're welcome to come up and do that. We'll clean that daily and clean that down and restock it every day as the day goes through. My custodians, at this point, I have Ms. Judy coming in in the mornings, an hour before anybody else is on campus. She's my half-time employee. She'll make sure everything's clean and ready for the day to start, and then Dale, Mr. Dale will work for three hours, and we will alternate that schedule, because we will have night welding students on campus, so we'll have an additional responsibility to the D building to get it set for the next day. So we'll, between the A building cleaning and the D building cleaning, we should be okay. As far as finances are concerned, any student that does not get to complete this nine weeks and comes back next year in August, that first nine weeks of their tuition will be waived, because they've already paid for this nine weeks that they're not receiving. And so I'm sure there's going to be a lot of Pell rules that we're going to have to address, but I've tried to follow the mandates that have come down as best we can from federal government. Any questions?
Are you anticipating a lot of traffic? I mean, as far as you're talking about, you know, you'll set up and put stuff out for people to pick up?
No, but I just want them to know it's available, because I mean, you know, we work on enrollment. I certainly don't want to recite to anybody who might be interested in, if they'll call us and email us, and we'll be putting this online, too. We can easily scan them and send them, which is our preferred method, to send them out applications. So nobody has to come there unless they don't have access to technology, because we'd be happy to email out applications.
Do you have the application online?
We do not, and that's because we don't have internet access at our school, to, we don't have Wi-Fi access to the general public, and what they would do is they would come in and do their fast phone, which required that they have something emailed to them, and because they can't get on their email at our school, because we're, I guess, last in line to get that, and it became very frustrating, so we don't have the application online.
But you can email?
But I can email. I mean, I can send them an electronic copy of it, but as far as being able to fill it out online, there was a lot of issue with internet access at our school. We paid for it, we just haven't quite gotten to us yet. We couldn't take advantage of the e-learning, e-system, e-rate, we had to pay, we didn't get an opportunity to pay back, but we did pay for that out of our technology money, it just hasn't gotten to us yet. Anything else?
Anything you think from us?
I don't think so, except permission to spend that money that I spent today. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Do you want Mr. Paul to come in?
I will.
Thank you, Jody. Please, sir. Mr. Paul's been here as well, maybe to have a hint of it, so.
Yes, I did.
Ms. Cool?
I did my best.
Ms. Cool, we've had to turn the speaker system off due to audio issues, so if you could speak up as much as you can, please?
I will do my best. Okay, last, but certainly, I hope not least. It is my plan on giving provisions to the students that need it in order to accommodate their disabilities. So what I've provided you is just the packet that I'm going to be sending out to my entire ESC team, and it will include my ESC teachers, those that are in self-contained classrooms, those that are in what we call support facilitation, the ones that work in conjunction with that gen ed teacher, my homebound teachers, the ones that are on community instruction right now, as well as my therapists. And as you can see on the front, I just have a brief cover sheet, and like I say in my letter here, the vast majorities of the IEPs that we have right now are written for brick and mortar schools. We do have a few that are online virtually through community instruction that we might be able to accommodate, but that option has been removed for now, as far as being in brick and mortar. So we're going to continue to serve our students that are qualified for those accommodations and supports as best we can in light of the circumstances. That's my plan. I say here that we're going to make good, safe decisions, we're going to make reasonable efforts, so that they can continue to get their fair and appropriate public education. Also, I made some comments here about IEPs. We'll no longer be able to do face-to-face IEP meetings, but I want us to get creative. We can do them by phone, we can do them virtually. I've actually set my first virtual eligibility meeting for next Tuesday, so it's going to be new for us. We're using Microsoft Teams, if you're going to see that throughout my packet, that's the virtual platform that we're using for these meetings. So I'm sure that by the end of this, we'll become pros at it, but it's a work in progress. So we're going to continue with the eligibility's, our evaluations, and also all of the IEP meetings. Turning to the next page. We have a number of students who are on what we call community-based instruction, those that might have been expelled, that still require ESC services. Also, we have homebound students, those that can't attend school due to medical reasons, just because of safety reasons, especially for some of those that are on homebound, that really have those intense medical needs. We don't want to give face-to-face services at this time, because some of those students are our most vulnerable students. So we're going to be making those services available by telephone, also by Microsoft Teams. The teachers will be reaching out to those students and those parents to provide the supports they need. And as you can also see through all of this plan, we're going to be documenting our efforts so that a year or two from now, when we're wondering why someone didn't get what was in the IEP, that we can always go back and remember this was due to an extraordinary circumstance. So we're making sure that we document our efforts on this as well. So the next page's going to be one of our, it's going to be a challenge, but I know that our therapists are going to be up to the challenge. We're actually, I'm holding our first virtual meeting with therapists tomorrow. The therapists are not going to be doing face-to-face therapy. We offer the language therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy, but I do want those therapists, number one, reach out to the parents, let them know what ways that they can support during this time. Also, make suggestions about what they can do with the packet or the virtual instruction that they've been given at home in the meantime. Also, give consult, support services to those families, give them some things that they can actually do at home, and if therapists feel that the student could benefit, they are also going to be able to use the Microsoft Teams, the virtual support there, so that they could actually provide teletherapy. So we're going to be discussing that in depth tomorrow with my therapy teams, but again, brand-new way of work, but I think that they'll, we will, as a group, be able to rise to the challenge. And again, we're going to be documenting all of this and making sure that in light of these circumstances, our students are still getting the best supports we can give them. And then I go on to the next page, ESC teacher support facilitators. This is where those teachers will come in and support those packets that you've been hearing about, that's going to be sent home, the virtual instruction. They'll be working in conjunction with the general education teachers, figuring out if the students are able to get all of their accommodations and supports, that they are entitled to, also making those very important home connections. I was saying, if nothing else comes out of this situation, I think that we're going to be able to really build our home and school connections, so I'm always looking for the positive, and I think that that might be a place that we can, has positive outcomes there. So again, lots of collaboration, lots of consultation at home is going to be the key to this. And also, I've requested that our ESC teachers reach out at least weekly, if not more, to offer those supports and strategies to parents. And then my last page, a lot of this is the same with the self-contained teachers. Students who are in a self-contained setting are there because they need the most intensive supports all day long. So those packets might look a little bit different when they go home, but these teachers will still be in contact with home, offering those accommodations, offering the more intensive supports, they can do that by phone, they can also use Microsoft Teams for that. So there's going to be lots of opportunities to use lots of different technology to offer the supports. And that's my plan.
How many students do you have covering this? And how many teachers do you have covering this?
Oh goodness, I believe that there are about six self-contained classrooms, and for support facilitation, I believe we have nine district-wide, and then therapists, we have six of the speech-language pathologists, two occupational therapists, and one physical therapist.
And Steve Hatchey?
Yes, they will receive the same kinds of support. Rusty Ludlum is the speech therapist with Steve Hatchey, Marcia Hunt is the occupational therapist, Jeremy Gray, they will be offering those same types of supports to those students with Steve Hatchey. Ms. Marion McCray is the ESC teacher down there as well.
On the therapy part, I know this is, we're talking to ESC, but have we opened up any kind of communication there for students that are under a lot of stress right now?
As in mental health supports?
Yes.
Okay. I know Paul Peavy has been in contact with community wellness, other agencies within the community, I know community wellness is one, that Paul had just found out that we are, we'll be able to do teletherapy with. I know Paul Peavy is working on getting set up on Microsoft Teams, so that he can do the teletherapy as well. So that's really, his project this week is to make sure that every child that we have in the system, that we have identified that need for mental health support, that they can get what they need.
He also did the video, didn't he?
Yes, he did a video about stress level, like you were just talking about, and some tips and strategies for parents and students to keep the stress and anxiety level as low as possible with what's going on.
It's posted?
Yes, ma'am, it's posted on our mental health, I think it was on the front page or our website, but I think it's on the mental health page as well.
It's on mental health, and it's also on our social media pages.
Anything you think from us? I will let you know if I do, I always appreciate it.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
You too.
Is that all the reports that we have?
Do you need to discuss our next meeting?
Before we do that kind of question, this piece of paper that you actually handled that, now that, I haven't sat here and read it all the way through, but that, do you want to pull together?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of highlights?
This is more overall, and then what they just went over was more, a little more
Are we going to try to have a virtual meeting, or are we going to do like this?
My recommendation, just for the safety, because I know you're probably going to want to hear it from a lot of them again, you know, Jody's mother is elderly, there's a lot of, you know, Ms. Branning couldn't be here because of her being pregnant, so, you know, with all the safety concerns, I think it'd also be a way for the public to have more input, you know, if they had questions, so I just think it shows that we're taking this serious. So that's up to you guys, I mean, Shannon's worked on doing a virtual conference, so everybody can call in, we can put the number out to everybody so they can call in, we can make sure everybody can hear. That would be my suggestion. I think it's just going to be hard to get all these people in every time. I mean, we can, and I prefer face-to-face, but I think with everything going on and the safety issues going virtually, maybe, and most districts, that's what they would be doing.
So, but that being said, we need to pick for another meeting, or should we just wait for the contest to us when we're needed?
I think we're down August 7th, I think it's that.
April.
April, I'm sorry. I think, three weeks from tomorrow, two weeks.
I don't know, I have to sit down with the packet like next Tuesday, the 31st.
That's just about two weeks from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, I didn't, next Monday probably wouldn't be the best time for an update, I mean, we can, in the afternoon, I just know there are going to be, you know, a lot of packets, I think there's going to be a lot of question, you know, everything is really not going to get rolling real hard until next Monday or Tuesday, but I mean, we could do Tuesday and the following Tuesday, I mean, that's up to you guys, whatever y'all want to do, I mean, we're, I'm open to whatever.
That's how we go with our next schedule.
Yeah, I don't think we need to overwhelm the administration and the teachers with trying to come meet with us, they've got so much going on already.
I agree, unless, nothing's going to, yeah, there's nothing going to change of the protocol, so.
So we'll just go with it and possibly, when do you think we'll hear from Department of Education or from the governor as far as, will he wait on the 14th and say, oh, by the way? Or do you think we'll hear something by the 7th?
I think.
Every fifteen days, what it's been? This is a second order.
And we're having calls every day, but, I mean, you really can't never tell. You know, I think some higher decisions causes the commissioner to make his decisions. So sometimes those decisions get made really quick, and then he has to make decisions really quick. I did get a notification, we do have a FADS call tomorrow, so we may get a little more insight from that call tomorrow. But I would hope by next, late next week, we have a good idea of what they're looking at. I hope.
Well, we do it for a thankful sales. I mean, if something comes up, you can always stop the avenue for the emergency meeting.
What, at 5:45 like normal? We'll just call in, or you'll send us the, like we did today?
Yeah, and, sorry, that, we have like that, what Alicia was talking about, that Microsoft Teams. I haven't really done much with it, but, I mean, that's included with our Microsoft, like our 365 that we already have. So I might try and get like Connie or somebody from MIT to help me and see if we can do that. Because if we already have that, we're already paying for it, we might as well use it.
We, just to interject on that, we used that today for a court proceeding, and the judge's office sent out the invite. So I think you all can originate it, and then everybody can just click on it from their email, and then they would be principal on a video conference.
So that's a problem.
It worked well today.
And you can, you're saying the Microsoft Team?
And you get it on your phone or laptop?
I did it on a laptop. You need a microphone and a camera, so I don't know if you have that accessibility on your desktop or where you intend to do it, but most laptops have the camera and the mic now, so.
Our laptops may have us kicked down. You know, it has us locked, would it?
My laptop brings it up automatically, and I didn't even do, I didn't even put it on there. So I don't, I mean, I don't know. That's something I haven't, I honestly haven't even opened it and done anything in it. But if it's something we already have, we might as well learn how to use it.
What they did today was, some of the people don't have the Office 365, so they just, the judge sent it in light, and then you can click on it, it's a web-based from your side. So that's the way you can access it. So you all may want, we just did a trial run today before court. There's going to be so many pieces of people participating, so you all may want to do a trial run and learn how to set it up and send out our invite.
And Connie Pearson just texted, I guess she was listening, she said she could help. So I'm having her to help me.
Because everybody then, I mean, we've got time to get this set up, not wait till the last minute. We get what you need, the information we get with us, to where we can do a trial run ourselves, but it's going to afford them, so okay, for that type of setup. Okay, and I guess it's, Ms. Paul, I guess that meets somewhat the requirement of the state and for its own kind law and all that, that's me.
Well, I don't know how you're going to have, you know, that would have everybody linked that's on the invite, but I don't know, unless you put the invite on the webpage, that might, that might work. I don't know if there's any limitations on how many participants you can have and so forth. So those are technology things that are beyond my scope. But I would think if you're going to set it up that way, that you need to have it on the website so that people would know how to link in if they chose to. So I think that would be it.
It could, this, I was just thinking this the other day too, like, is there a way that we could put out there for the public? I mean, and then like to be here in person, but like, could they send us their questions, like in advance? Or is there some?
The two meetings, you know, that we use for several different organizations have used it. You, Department of Education would be in one of them. You can do a chat, and they can ask a question, even if they don't have the video, but even if they don't have a microphone.
Yeah.
They can do the chat and just ask a question, and we have somebody man that part of it. And I don't think there's a limit on that.
I don't think there is only one I'm talking about either, but I mean, it's a matter of preference. I've used that one as well, you know, so.
But yeah, I don't see nothing wrong either with them emailing.
Right, like if we said, send us your questions on whatever, five, this time, and we'll make sure that we address it, I mean, I don't know.
The problem is then you don't have the, the public doesn't get to hear the discourse from the board. So.
Get one question to spur another question.
Well, I seen a meeting the other day where they was allowing people to email the question, and then the actual chair was reading the question, and then it was being discussed in the meeting.
And then if they watch it, watch the video, they're coming in and they're.
And we're not the only ones doing this, I mean, there's a lot of resources out there.
Right, I'm sure it's. It's not, I mean, really, our meeting is going to be basically just trying to catch up on what has been and what is going on. And it's not normal, somewhat, kind of, you know, dusty business. It's, and everything changes from day to day, everything's very fluid right now. So, but we're good for doing something of that nature, and we just need to be contacted and the information shared where we can compare for it. Okay. Anything else?
And if there is any questions, any parents have any questions, we urge them to call the schools. Those offices will be, somebody will be there, and our office is up here. There may be, they're doing some rotations, but we'll have somebody here answering the phones, and each department will also have somebody there to answer the phones.
I got three questions today, and a lot of them are coming from senior parents, and they're really concerned about the senior activities. I know we're getting guidance from the top, but I think as soon as we can put some information out there as far as prom. But that's the main question that I keep getting, is prom and far as those students that are in good standing right now with their grades, how the grades are going to be impacted with this, you know, remaining time. So Ms. McCoy answered to the most that she could today as far as how we plan to continue to the 15th. But a lot of questions are centered around how kids are going to make sure they're in good standing come to their graduation requirements.
And what we have told each principal today, if there's any student who, you know, our seniors need to be definitely a priority, even graduated, but any student who is on the bubble or jeopardy, the teacher should be speaking with those parents and letting them know, you know, what they're looking at.
I'm seeing a lot of questions about, do you look, about, I paid a deposit for this trip, senior pictures, graduation. And I know we're not, we can answer a lot of those, but I just, it would be good if they know that we are going to as soon as possible, but we do need to be thinking of alternatives for different things.
When it comes to the trips, don't we have to wait for like, say, for answers? Like if someone paid a trip for C word, don't we got a way to get information back from C word or we can even get information back to the parent that earned the money?
From my understanding, talking with the schools today, a lot of them are allowing them to go ahead and cancel. So they're going to, each school's going to make that announcement when they can look at getting that money back and to the parents refunding the money. So each school, that was a topic that we talked about Friday or Thursday, Friday, what's Friday? Friday and today about refunds for individuals on trips. There may be some things at the high school, I'm not sure how that's going to work out, but definitely on the trips, they're going to work on that. And each school's going to handle that individually.
I did miss, you know, one of the Florida School Courts Association, little information, little webinars this week. And one of the questions that came up, they said that you need to think about, that was back on the prom and all, and they mentioned it about, you know, maybe you could think of other ways to do proms, like a virtual prom, I mean, so, but they did say that we needed to start with. Not only that, it's like you say, you know, there's a lot of things with graduation, graduation requirements and all. But, and I'm sure that they're already looking at some of those at the high schools. But, I mean, as soon as we can start communicating some of those, you know.
I think we got time on graduation, and I think most districts probably wait for the first district because I don't know far as prom. But we got to figure something out with that. I mean, prom is typically in April, and honestly, truthfully, I don't know what we're going to be able to do with that. But the sooner DOE can give us guidance on that because of the social distance, we're going to have to put some information out there.
I feel like their recommendation is going to be follow the CDC's recommendations.
Right. And if that's the case, I mean, that's above us, so we just got to put it out there. I know it's easy to say, then go.
If we're all looking at, trying to be real about what we're at, you know, the likelihood of prom and the even graduation is really, you know, the likelihood is really small, but it's going to happen. Now, things could change, and we would love to go back to normal tomorrow. Going on two and a half weeks to Easter. And I know there's not a person that I know that has had the opportunity to celebrate Easter, but we're right here so close to, we may not, we may not have enough.
Easter?
So, it's just not normal times, and, but all we can do is, we've been blessed in our area not to have any cases yet, and we're no different from anybody else. But I'm thankful that we've not had any, and we just need to be thankful for that and pray for those who are facing some very difficult times right now. But we're just going to have to take it one day at a time because things change every day. And so I guess we're here tonight, and our next meet will be December, and it's 5:45, and they are going to have all this technology earned out.
Were we going to, did we need to do any special meet for each of now, or how you would handle those? But, you know, that was the question.
Well, I bet you took a picture of that, but I guess, give you a little thought.
Today we discussed and said, as a right now, you've given the parents the guidance. And we're telling them they're still going to complete their work and move forward until we get back into school.
Hopefully by next week, we'll have some more guidance.
I hope.
I feel like that hopefully they won't wait till on the 14th and say, oh, by the way. I don't know. I think we need to be prepared for whatever comes, and not be caught with a, there's a push right now from lockdowns. I think we'll get information some day. West Virginia lockdown today.
Hey, anything else? Right when we hear a motion in the second, that we adjourn.
Oh, second.
Any questions?
Eight.
Okay, please do. Brenda, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, so carry.
Thanks, Al.